...in order, appreciate your patience with that. We try to keep things on the up and up of time and everything else. So good to see you, everybody out here and looking forward to your input. This board made a decision to have these workshops back-to-back with our regular monthly meetings so we can do these very things that are about to occur. And I want to assure you because the chair of this board that we listen and we get ideas, we get the pulse really in front of the bus arc and our public and we hope there'll be more and more participation. And I'd like to say to everybody here, we do have an agenda list today. I have a few things that I'd like to mention as well, so maybe we can fill all of them. First of all, on our agenda for the day, before we present these, will be recognizing Mr. Glenn Carson with Soil and Water Conservation. Mr. Carson?
Ready?
You ready?
All right.
Welcome to you.
You done anything over here?
Well, if you want to be heard, should possibly do that. I don't think that mic goes around unless you can turn to those folks and be very loud.
We appreciate this opportunity to finally talk to you guys about soil conservation and what we do at the Soil Conservation Office. And we're going to consider this just kind of an opportunity to educate you a little bit about who the soil conservation is in Grand County. And I thought the best way to do that was from the beginning. You know, it's kind of like studying the Bible, you're starting Genesis. And so that's how I'm going to start. We're going to start in the beginning with soil conservation being along. Does anybody know who this guy is? If they have a clue? You've seen me before, anybody know? That's the father of soil conservation, that's Hugh Henry Bennett. Go ahead, Kathy, to the next slide if you would. I've got some statistics about him. Hugh Henry Bennett was born in 1881 in Hanson County, North Carolina. That's just outside of Charlotte. He grew up on a 1,200 acre plantation there and he was educated. His dad was a farmer, so he was just a farm kid. He was educated in the University of Chapel Hill. And you recognize early on that there were some issues with soil erosion on his dad's farm. You know, dad was doing things different. There was some erosion, there was problems on the land, and he recognized that. So anyway, he became a crusader for the soil erosion cause and he testified before Congress a couple of times. And as a result, the soil impermeabilization were authorized. The Soil Erosion Act of 1935 formed the Soil Erosion Service, which later became the Soil Conservation Service, which would later be not be trans- what's the proper word I'm looking for? Changed to the Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is the agency I work for today. Now, I'll tell you a little bit about this. When Bennett went before Congress, you remember the great dust bowls going across the midways? He turned his testimony before Congress as this huge dust clouds went into Washington, DC. And so it became real to the congressmen that there's a need for some type of soil erosion. He noticed this all across the country as he traveled when he was out after college. And so they formed the Soil Erosion Service. The Grand Prix Soil and Water Conservation District was formed in 1937. Bennett, once he got Congress to agree to fund an agency, he realized that the big government couldn't deliver a program to local farmers. He had to involve local farmers. And so he went back to Hanson County, back to the farmers in Hanson County, his hometown. And they got a group of farmers together and they created the Soil and Water Conservation, the first Soil and Water Conservation District. And it was local farmers, he got them to buy into his ideas. And for years and years and years, they had no money. It was all just information and education, educating the farmer that it was not good to plow it down the hill, you know, the contour farming was good, and that cover crops were a good idea. And so it was just about educating farmers, but it was all the work in through those local connections, those local soil water districts. So the Soil and Water Districts were formed in 37. Our beginning focused on soil erosion, but today we focus on a variety of things. And we do that through the thing we have called Conservation Plan. Today, the local soil water district partners with NRCS. It's a unique partnership. The federal government, which is in NRCS part of it, partners with local soil water district supervisors to get conservation on the ground hopefully. Your local residents are Kathy and Billy, which you guys know, they're your local district posts. So we work on a variety of water quality issues, water quantity issues, genetic affluence, soil erosion, soil quality, animal health, foliage, voila. In other words, my point is it's a very diverse field. We don't just do water quality work, okay? Someone, just a quick rundown of some of the federal programs. Like I said, for years and years, we had no money. And then in 1988, for the first time, we got money in the North Carolina Ag Cost Share Program. And I'll talk about that a little bit in a minute. But I want to tell you about the U.S. Farm Bill programs, the federal farm bill. There's the EQIP program, which is a huge program nationwide. The CSP, which is Conservation Spiritship, it's also a pretty large program. The WIP, which is Wildlife Habitat and Ecstasy Program. And CRT, which is Conservation and Reserve Program. And the Federal Farm and Land Plant Protection Program on the federal side. There are thorough tunneling, these are just some of the main ones. The SAFE programs, which is the big one, the North Carolina Ag Cost Share Program, 319, EEP, CCAP, and AGRAC. So other programs, one that you may even know about now is this EWP. I know Grand County submitted a request for assistance for emergency watershed protection and that was gone with this too, plus the North Carolina Farm and Water Protection Program. All right, Kathy? Just a quick rundown of some dollars that have come through the Ag Cost Share Program. And these are dollars that have come into Grand County in the last few years. These are two farmers through the Ag Cost Share Program and through the local soil water district. Probably have never seen these figures. In 2013, we had contracts totaling $35,450. In 2012, $38,180. 2019, $35,740. And you see all the figures. About $207,000 coming through this local soil water district office. It's pretty impressive. All right, go ahead. A quick rundown on the federal side. And I've got to give you a little bit of slant here. The federal government won't allow me to give you exact figures, so I have to tell you these are estimated unless they're certified by the National Finance Center. So if you're going to report any of these numbers, make sure these are estimates. In 2013, in the work unit, we had 73 applications for assistance. 38 have been funded so far. 12 of those were from Grand County. Well, the work unit, I worked three counties. I worked Cherokee, Plain, and Grand. Grand County, we had 12 applications. 36 active EQIP contracts currently in the work unit and they total $88,000. Go ahead. CSP, just a quick rundown of where we're at. Number one, contracts are three active contracts in Grand County for $15,000. WIP, in Grand County, we have one active contract for $25,000. Go ahead. Okay. Total farm deal allocation and obligation for Grand County, $178,000. Currently in the work unit, eight one active contracts for $485,000. 11 of those contracts in Grand County for $72,000. A lot of money comes through our office to farmers and that's one of the reasons I wanted to share some of these numbers. Not that you'll ever remember, that you even need to remember, but I wanted you to know that a lot of money comes into the county through the soil water district office. Okay, Kathy, you go ahead. We won't review all of them because I know numbers are boring, unless we pick and talk about numbers and it gets boring. He doesn't think. From the local admin paper, we've been contacted by a number of people. A lot of people in Grand County are interested in emergency watershed protection. The damage survey teams, I'll kind of get up to you because this slide was a few weeks ago. The damage survey teams, we work all day in Clay County today, doing surveys over there. And so we'll probably pick up Graham and Cherokee later this week. And that's kind of where we're at in a minute. And they will, they'll tell us from those damage surveys which sites will be eligible to fund. Okay, just a quick rundown of resource concerns. For years and years, we've been known as the water tank people, the people that brings cows out of the creek and putting water tanks. And I spoke these in here just so you could know that we work on so many more operations than just getting some cows out of the creek. Just resource concerns, go ahead, let's look through those. Go ahead. So look at some of our work. This is a seasonal high tunnel. And this is a new practice for us. This is a practice that we're funding. We funded a couple of these in Grand County. And you'll start seeing these pop up. This is a season extension high tunnel. And it's an effort through the EQIP program to help farmers extend the growing season on the front end and the back end and to get some local produce to the market, okay?
Why'd you say this from there?
EQIP.
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 And you said this right here is EQIP, but you said there's a name for this?
Seasonal high tunnel.
Seasonal high.
Mm-hmm. If you have a question, if you have a question anywhere in this, do holler at me. I'll answer it for you. That's right. Yeah. This is an ag chemical mixing facility. We don't have one of these in Grand County yet, but we have some. There's possibly a few needs for these. Vegetable growers, this is in a vegetable operation over in Cherokee County and it's a nice structure. It's about a $50,000 structure for them. And it's to mix chemicals in so that they can bring the sprayer right in there. It's got a containment facility, so if there's a spill, if it contains spill, it won't have any environmental impacts. They can drop the sprayer right through. It's got a roll store on the other side, they can fully in mix the chemical right inside, okay? Educations, school programs, you know, we have the conservation field there. They just had one last week, Kathy?
May 3rd.
May 3rd. How many kids do you have?
Over 100.
Over 100.
About 100.
And that's an annual thing that we do. All right, go ahead. Stream restoration is another big one. This is kind of a thing that has been going on for about 20 years now. This is a rock structure to create a, to fix a problem. Let's see, go to the next slide. I think I've got the problem before that there, it's not available. You can go back to it. But it's just a rock structure to take the energy off the vine and put it in the center of the stream.
Is that true or how?
That is actually Peachtree Creek.
Peachtree.
Yes, it is. Peachtree Creek. Okay, go ahead, go to the next one. We have done a lot of work to stabilize winter feeding stations. That was a very common site this last winter. And we've got several solutions, several different options. Go ahead. There's about three that I've got slides of. This is kind of the caddie-like version. This is a facility where they can bring the livestock in and feed in the center of it. Go ahead. Just another, another version of it. And then this is just the simpler version. It's just a concrete slab with a little bunk wall in the back. And the idea being that the farmer can feed on it in the winter and save impacts to his fields. And then they can scrape up the mure and then they can land a plot in the spring, okay? Pollinator plants. Nationally, pollinators have been on a decline and they've noticed that. And pollinators are very important to our food stream. And so we've, pollinators, plantings have been done all across the work unit, Cherokee, Plain, Grand, to help with honeybees and all the different little bees and butterflies and food pollination. Just kind of a little thing we've done. This is the new and emerging industry. I think this is going to be a big one in the next 25 to 30 years, I think personally, in our area. The grape growers have decided that our climate is similar to Annaphe Valley and they can grow grapes here. This one is actually in Cherokee County. It's about a 12 acre vine. But I think that this will be the industry that we see in these mountain counties in the next few years, okay? And actually, I think the, didn't Andrews Valley get recognized? I think they're recognized now. I was thinking, I heard that just the last couple of weeks. They got a national recognition. Other services we provide that you don't often think about, just technical advice. If somebody has a site that needs a seeding recommendation, they need to know how much lime, how much fertilizer to put out, how much seed to put, how many pounds per acre. Some other services we provide. This particular case, we got into two landlords were having a dispute. This one had had a logging job and had cleared their lane and the lane down below was getting a ton of erosion. And that was just a free surface that, you know, that somebody has to go out there and help. And that's one of the things that we've done here. All right, let's go to the next slide. This is kind of the master of that same shot where we come in and help to locate silv fences. You can see the silv fences are in different places and we gave them a seeding recommendation. Put in a set of pond down there for the water to catch in. All right. Roads. We get a lot of calls from people with roads, with developments. A lot of roads were built in bad places, mass wasting, where the road starts to fall off, slide down the hill, just grabbed and taken over, all right? Worst state sites, this is one of the sites that we looked at, that I looked at over in Cherokee County. But it's common everywhere, all in our mountain counties, another service we provide, okay? This is the floor of that other, you know, the first shot we showed with the seeding recommendation. This is the downsized, downslope farms that's getting all the erosion, all right Kathy? And then this is the active fish after we helped put in all stabilizers and put in the BMPs and stuff. No money check stands. All we did here was just give technical advice and listen to landlords' thoughts, all right? Fish stabilization, a little technical advice. Grazing workshop, this is Dr. Matt Horwath. He's actually, this is a group of farmers and we were explaining, he was explaining the relationship of root depth to forage height, that the plant will have as much high above ground as it has below ground. And trying to get the farmers to rotate the caddie and build their job with rotation of grazing, instead of grazing grass right into the ground. And I like to explain this to farmers, say, it's just like if you mow your grass and you let your, you know, my wife, she wants to shave right into the ground when she mows. And your roots on the grass are the same height as the top of your blade. And this is just another little simple demonstration. He actually runs some plants up there, he was explaining that to farmers. All right, we can go ahead. Some other quick footnotes here. Individuals we work with, landlord, businesses, large groups, subdivisions, uninclosed. We get office calls, we make stop visits if people need us to come out. We've got a ton of engineering tools. We've got designers, soils, information, anything you need. Go ahead, Kathy. Another service that we provide from time to time is erosion control plans and help with the road control plans, review erosion control plans, make sure that they had the proper thing down. Road construction, layout roads, streambank erosion, ponds. We get questions on ponds, give advice on soil water control. Permits are a big thing. We get a lot of calls about permits. Who do I call? Who do I call if I want to dig this stuff out of the creek? Or if I want to work in this ditch? Or I want to dig a ditch through my field in the frame of spring or wetland? You know, who do I call? What are the permits required? And we help with that a whole lot. Thank you. Just some more services, we'll run through all the, on TV sites for you. Okay? I think that's all we've got. We keep it short, but I appreciate your time and appreciate your love.
I just have a few questions. I have a busy, busy, my personal question, possibly for anybody here. But this is not regulatory or regulatory law.
Soil and water.
That would be a big sell because, you know, how that goes. And then you spoke also that most of all these programs are county-specific or if they're any regional, they are all areas.
The federal programs are nationwide.
Nationwide.
Nationwide. The state Ag Cost Share Program, state.
Okay. All right, but it's not just isolated. Would it be a possibility if a Cherokee County and a Grand County, a Swain County came together and said, look, you know, we might have this common problem and that there might be resources available or training or advice on a regional basis instead of county? Is that making sense? Yeah. Well, I'm just throwing it out there because, you know, we're finding more and more as we deal with things that, with a population of 8,000 people in Grand County and what was 20, another 30, maybe over, no, it's Macon County, but the population of Andrews, you know, and say the population of farmers there versus the population of farmers here, you know, there might be cooperative kinds of things that you can come together and do. You see what I'm saying? At least if there are resources involved, of her training or anything like that. I know that you probably offer a program in Grand County that everybody in the region can come to Grand County. Is that right?
Well, our sign of the period are, they're national centers. And so they go nationwide. There are specific pots of money for areas. Area one, which is states for waste. I got an email and I'm going to talk out of school because I don't know a whole lot about what I'm going to be able to tell you about. There's a new initiative going on. It's called Strike Force. And it's something that's just come about in Grand County and Cherokee County, the name in that group, it's a little pot of money just for counties with low unemployment or high unemployment. And Cherokee and Graham are both named in that. But I just got the email, so I don't know a ton about it. But there are initiatives like that and they always have initiatives for underserved groups, social disadvantaged, historically underserved, Native Americans, Hispanics, any of the minority groups.
Well, I was thinking, you know, you were showing us that chemical mixing location. You know, what if Billy Holger came over here and showed up with the tanks on the back of his truck? Could you help him out in Cherokee County?
He's in Grand County.
Sitting right there.
Yeah, I don't understand. I don't follow your question.
Well, yeah, that center is over there, Mixing Chemical Mixing Center is over in Cherokee County.
Oh, if he wanted one on his farm.
Yeah.
I wanted to use that.
Right, tanks over there to his tanks in the Cherokee side.
Well, that's just one farmer's particular site. We could put one on his farm.
All right.
Yeah, we could put one on his farm. I'll leave it there.
All right, good.
Sorry.
All right. And I think I pieced it together with your, you know David Wood very well.
I do know him.
Yeah. I think I've heard of you through David.
Okay.
And Camp Brown or something, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. So now I've put the name with the base, so that's great. Anybody have comment or questions? Anyone here in the public? Mr. Carson, thank you very, very much. Carson, Mr. Glenn Carson, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. All right, we have a little more time here now. We'll recognize Mr. TJ Holland with the Fort Monctonary Archaeology proposal. TJ.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you all for giving me time. With, I'm, my, everybody at the Juwesc Museum here. My job, my job is a cultural resources supervisor for the county. So I want to do a lot with education and all this, all of this. I would like to, I was under the commission to see if they would be interested in this, is the potential for the Juwesc Museum to grant a grant for fossil archaeology on the Fort Hill site on the county property, ostensibly to locate Fort Monctonary. This being a 170 year anniversary of the removal of Trail of Tears, there's a lot of things being discussed, projects. And when I was maybe worried if the county owns that property, I thought this would be a good opportunity for partnership. Being as any construction project is going to be coming on Fort Hill, it's going to require fossil archaeology.
Yeah, we know that.
This could cover that and graphically written as it's planned right now through the Juwesc Museum. But this would be a partnership between Grand County, the Eastern Band, and the University of North Carolina Chapel. We've been doing, the two other gentlemen, one's a professor at UNC, works in the Research Department for Archaeology, another colleague works in forage southern. I think we add and we combined for about 50 years of research on the removal, with a lot of that focusing on Grand County. And we have a lot of material already together. We just don't know exactly where to put this.
Right.
And we'd like to see if the county would be interested in, later we'll have to go check that out.
Well, you know, one of the things, and I think about everybody here, you know, Fort Hill, you know, that is Fort Monctonary. And I came by that, I think by some of the things that were written up in Centennial, you know, book and one thing. And of course, my dad has a, had an interest in that as well. And one of the things that this board finds every time we've had, we've had two construction projects there, is that a portion of that expense, just from the extent of expense standpoint, is having these archaeological surveys done. So the question that I would have, PJ, and this is just something in that, if this study is done and the location of the fort is determined, is there a certification process where we can say, yes, that this is already, this has been done? Or will we still end up having to turn around and pay to have that archaeological study done again?
No, this will encompass the archaeological report. It would have to be submitted after, after effective archaeology is done, the report that follows is the young gentleman following. This would cover that on the board.
Okay.
That report would be the report that will be followed from here on out. So there would be all that specific property, no need for any further archaeological investigation.
Okay. And I believe it's around 15 or 16 acres up there? Is that what we have? I know that the transaction was done like in 2006, we bought the property that the county did. And I was on the board for six months, then you have a term then. And I remember that that transaction was made, I believe, about 2006. And, you know, all the things that are going on with that. How extensive will that be? That's my question. Is it a 15 acre lot or is there a particular spot that you may have some idea that this is where we need to start? Or is it going to be all encompassing or how is that going to be done?
We were looking specifically at the upper proportion of the property above the road below the old manufacturing plant. As that is considered to be the prime location for where the fort is. I know that other places where archaeology has been done, has been found.
Right.
There was nothing there for that, all those slums.
Right. Well, you know, my view of this is, you know, is that if development, if further development's going to be there, you know, and it be, you know, new base anyway. You know, the facility is already there with the plant building and what this board, you know, such a board's down the road, my plan to do. But, you know, I would be, you know, support that to say, well, yeah, here this is. And then if that certification will stand, you know, and say, well, you know, this is it. Because either way, if you, either the Eastern Band through this grand project is going to go and discover that, or if we say, well, right here's where we'd like to put this, so and then that archaeological study can be done anyway. So if there's a possibility that Grandland is going to assist the county, if you're talking in terms of a partnership, you know, this board here will have to make the decision, probably by vote. And we're in a work session right now, but it'll surely be a topic of discussion with us. So when do you need to have that? Is it a letter of support? Is it, is it just a yay? Or is there some documentation that you request?
Any, you know, prepare your sure letter of support. The grand cycle, everything has, of course, everything has to move quickly.
Right. Okay, how fast is it?
The next grand cycle coming up will be the first week in June.
That's right.
Four, five. And of course, I won't have been able to really get after this in the last week, we can have the things in place here. But if we can't get that in time, if you don't have just to vote or a resolution or whatever you are, can't do that, there will be another grand cycle coming in December. So, you know, if, as long as we have, if we get, you know, if y'all agree, commissioners agree and want to move forward on this project, then, you know, unless y'all have construction projects planned over the next three months, it'll be all right, you know?
All right.
And to be specific about the archaeology report, the report, once the report is finalized, it will be submitted to the State and Fort Preservation Office.
Right.
And it'll be on their records. So that in the future, if there is a project, then the SHPO will just refer to that report.
Okay. Now you use the term what you call?
SHPO.
What's a SHPO?
State and Fort Preservation Office.
Okay.
It's SHPO, sorry about that.
That's fine.
But they, but they will use that to refer to any future projects.
Okay. Is there a designation marker, designation that's for the government?
There is no one yet. We have a, the North Carolina Chapter of the Trail of Tears Association has an interpretive panel located at the museum right now that with the Blue Ridge Heritage Sign Initiative, we're going to be able to put those together in the middle of town. So it won't be, that particular site won't be on the table.
Okay.
If we can find one building related to the fort and, you know, the possibility and again, working with these other organizations, I'm sure we can find some way.
Right. Well, you know, it's so much of the heritage of the county and I appreciate that. But we will have further conversation about it and we see what we do have the June deadline. We've been pretty good with pressure, I mean, it comes to that. But do you have any in touch with Andy? Andy, okay.
I have.
Alright, great. Because he could probably be the lead on that, no deal with the grand cycle. Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Appreciate any further assistance, Mr. Taylor will be there to help you.
Okay.
Be done.
Alright, thank you PJ, appreciate it very much. Alright, at this time, we'd like to recognize Mr. David Dodson with Recycle.
I'm already in.
Okay, you want to go through the recognition? I think you're on the agenda for recognition. Okay, great, thank you David.
I'm waiting for a break.
Okay. At this time, we recognize Mrs. Hannah McMiler with Travel and Tourism.
Thanks for not reading to the end. I think it was, they were working with the attorney over there to go to the county, probably what was here. And she wasn't already the guy, the gentleman was coming to speak. Was called out on emergency meeting, so they're not there.
Okay. Alright. I will be the interim guy, thanks to someone on this board who highly recommended me. I'll not mention any names, but I think you can look up who it was. But as you may know, or you may not know, Connie Orr has been absent from a lot of her meetings and the things that she does in her county. Due to her sister being in Texas, being treated for cancer. So we're trying to do the best we can to take up some slack on those committee representations and everything. And I'll be interim to the Travel and Tourism Board. And my fellow commissioner Keith Ehr will be, Keith Ehr will be appointing to the RDA in her stead as well. So be mindful of that. Alright, so anyone else here that has something? Joe, did you have something to say for, to us here?
I guess in the trailer you heard.
Well, you can do either if you like. I mean, we have time now, or you can wait with the board. And hopefully Commissioner Williams will be here as well.
I'll call him later.
Okay, we'll have a public comment. Did you sign up?
I did.
Alright, great. Alright, then if that be the case, I would like to take a few minutes, alright? And where's Mr. Kelly at?
He just stood there.
Okay. Alright, I'm not going to steal any thunder or anything, but I've got to spend a few minutes with this. I feel obligated to do it. And I would like to show you this right here. I've not found it put on show or after anything. But this is the listing of people who have not paid their taxes in Graham County. 2003 to 2012. I've done a lot of homework I can. I'm not a smart aleck, by the way. I just try to get up on what's going on, because I have to answer for a lot. And this listing here, I want you to notice also, it has DMV marked in here too. It's the, there's documents, and they have those marked out. So this is not representative of DMV, which is fixing to take a dramatic change on how the taxes, you and I pay. Our county taxes on our vehicles. We went through the process in our budget. We spent about five days. Some things that we tried to do to shorten that period of time was to develop a pay plan. Develop a process of evaluation of employees. And our finance officer is going to be going through particulars on that, as her budget is presented to us tonight. But I want to tell you this, when we started that budget process, we ended up being $695,000 shy in the hole. All this wonderful news, we have the fund balance and, and the requirement that we have to maintain a given fund balance. But then we're slammed with a $695,000 hole dig out of before we can start making allocations for money that we don't have yet. That's the wonderful thing about setting budgets is that you project them on revenues that you do not have. So we started out with $695,000 on top of what we do not have. So with that, we went and looked at all of this. And there have been efforts made, as I've said in the past, in this board, if anybody wants to talk, if you remember this board. We have gone and done the offsets, we have dealt with the issues of garnishment. You know, people get their income tax return and a portion that's taken away, we fly mad. But when I looked at the $695,000, and then I got a tobo on how much the unpaid taxes were. Anybody want to make an estimate how much those were?
Half a million.
Half a million. Over half a million dollars of uncollected taxes. And here we sweat, banging our heads against the wall, trying to balance the budget if people aren't paying the taxes. So with that, I'm just going to go ahead and say, it is not already all over the community. We're going to begin in earnest the process of tax liens and foreclosure. And you say, oh, man, how's that? But I go through the list, and I find some of these who have net worth of over $1.5 million, and they owe $21,000. Then you get to the back of this, and there's some of them here that owe $43.57. I've called my sister counties around us. I've got calls pending, they're getting results back from them. And I want to share this with you. Jackson County for one, had unpaid taxes in the amount of $1.2 million. They're going after it, reading the smoke amount of these. Macon County has unpaid taxes of $1.4 million. Graham County has half a million. Cherokee County, $1.58 million. And we've had a discussion here, you know, the board is, we're going through all of this. And I've seen no fairness in the fact that everybody pays their taxes except for those who don't. And to go and compound this, there are people that had 10 bills, and they have unpaid 10, or unpaid 8 of them. People in here have had 10 bills, you know, billings, and they just don't pay. They just don't. And what it runs into is that I've gone and I've looked to the issue of foreclosure as it is in North Carolina law. And they want to ride it out until 10 years. But I want you to know that this board, and I believe it's unanimous, is looking to the point of what we can do. If there's a retaining of attorneys, or attorney, to start this process. And to make sure that we have our ducks in the road, that we do it right. It's not anything you want to do. But it keeps coming back in my mind again, there is a woman in Graham County. Who finds herself away to town completely, and pays $5 on her tax bill. Then we have those who are making, you know, all of that, and then they owe $21,000 and won't pay. I mean, won't pay. So if that's what it needs to be done, fine. Because this board, I'm telling you, we went through a lot in trying to come up with a budget. And you're going to hear it from our finance officer. We're having payback of a surtax on unemployment insurance that the state encumbered. Encumbered us with, we're going to pay a surtax to pay off their debt to the federal government for unemployment insurance. About $54,000. Just the beginnings of Obamacare are beginning to show itself. Just those two things there, we started $101,000 in the hole. Where's it going to come from? So that's, that's what I had to say in regard to that. These other commissioners, and, you know, I'm about to be mally about it, but you know, I've got about 18 months left in what I do. And I think that the best thing for us to do, for the taxpayers, and anybody that owns property in our county. You pay yours, then everybody needs to pay theirs. This board has made the offer to come in and make arrangement to pay your unpaid taxes, as did this woman. And then we've had to turn to going and garnishment and dead set off. It's the last thing in the world. And then they're going to say, oh, I hate you, during these hard times. Well, folks, everybody got it. And I'm not being cold hearted about it, and I'm, it's just hard to do that. One of my fellow officials, Billy and I have had the conversation. Everybody pays theirs in the same services. And, you know, what, you know, how do you do that? So that's your, that's the situation.
I think it's your responsibility to take action on it, as a county commissioner.
Mr. Kelly made that appearance. And that's why I was wondering if he was here to, that we heard that. And I looked at it, and to be quite honest with you, I hadn't realized it was that much money. And I should have known that. But when it comes down to the bottom line, and you look at that, and you see how much you're in the hole this year? It'd been much easier for this board to have sat down and to figure out $195,000 shortfall, instead of $695,000. So, there it is. So I guess the reason for doing this is to just let it be known out there that that process is going to be established. There are things that you can tailor it to Graham County. The law is clear, what we can and cannot do. The General Assembly tells counties what they can do. You can't assume anything that you can do unless they tell you that you can. And one of those is, and it's law, it's in 105. I mean, it's a foreclosure process in general statute. So that's the plan that we have going forward. Do you all have anything? Well, that's, that's where this board, and if I have not said something correctly, I need to be corrected now.
One side on the collecting the back end. The residents of Graham County, the majority of the residents, we're collecting around 95%. But the other 5% and more fail, are getting the same services that you're getting, I'm getting, he's getting. They're getting, in other words, in my opinion, are getting free ride. It's time for everybody to catch in and get the same services. That's what I think about it.
We're looking for money now, for a debt service to get amicis to keep them on read. If you talk about triage and things that are really important, we have to start with protection. We start with folks being there with emergency medical care, during what's called an hour. To get them to a place where they're going to have sufficient medical attention. So that's, that's, that's in the conversation. Another thing I'd like to say is that this board, last time I met, talked to the point of wanting increasing the occupancy tax in Graham County. I'll go ahead and speak my mind to that. We do have, it's not as easy, and I said it that evening, and I do hope, pray I said it clearly. Is it not something we can just sit here and vote on? We have to have act of the General Assembly or preset ceiling. And the ceiling was at 3. Nobody can go with 3%. We have requested, and Senator Davis had an open bill, which means that there was an open bill laying there for events like this. For all of the counties and the 50th district that he represents. And Graham County is the one that got there first. The bill number is S-136. And it made it through first reading, it's gone to several different committees, and it's still out there. The last action taking on it is May 7. And what that will do, and I hope everybody is hearing what I'm about to say. It is not 6% added on top of 3 to make it 9. It's just not. The maximum ceiling combined with any municipality in Graham County is that municipality can get 3, and the county will get 3. For a total of 6. You can't get 7. We already have one in the town of Fontana Dam has already got that. They've had that by the General Assembly. They, as a municipality, gets 3%, 3%. We have the town of Robbinsville, who had a bill for the General Assembly before we did. And we're not in competition with the town of Robbinsville. We didn't go to jump up on anything. But everybody else in the county is going to be paying that 6%. And the bottom of this board is, is that a lot of folks have come through the occupancy tax on that. And I'm willing to listen and to hear about it. But as far as I know, that we're going to go ahead and have that to be at the ceiling. And that occupancy tax, it goes directly into travel and tourism. We can't go spending it on whatever project we want to spend it on. And we're doing our level best to have that travel and tourism to be as best a body as it can. And it is an independent body. It's an independent body. So hopefully, you know, as I said, the goal's out there, the discussion has taken place about having a facility. And that facility, it's been talked about, is United Community Bank, that easily goes down from the parking lot. That that might work out with a loan, that they might have a facility for travel and tourism there. Instead of tucked away in the street farm where that's where it now is. So that's some of the things that, so with that, I don't know that I could need to say anymore.
On that subject, isn't that tax and spend?
Tax and spend?
Yeah.
What do you mean?
You haven't heard that now?
Yeah, it's something we try to avoid at all talks.
Okay.
Do you want to say more to that?
I can, in the record meeting, I probably will. But it's just tax and spend, more due to government. I passed, I don't know how many vacant buildings on my way here, there's three. There's a gas station right across the way here, that would be suited perfectly. There's two other buildings which suit perfectly. For the government to go out and buy property.
We're not buying it, Joe. It's being donated on lease.
Okay.
And what would be happened would be the mortgage.
Yeah.
The built facility.
But it's tax and spend, big government.
Well, we either collect occupancy tax or we don't.
Yes, and we pay ours, we pay ours.
Down now. You know, it has to spend for travel and tourism.
$140,000, I wish, I wish, I made, I wish I made half of that to my business. I mean, I wish I brought half of that. I have to go away to work to make my business make.
Travel and tourism? You're comparing your work to travel and tourism?
No, I'm tracking their budget, $140,000.
Right.
If this fall county can have a travel and tourism department operate on $140,000. I'm missing it somewhere.
Okay. Once and if the request of the General Assembly comes through for this occupancy tax, we require that public hearing? There will be a public hearing? Okay? We'll be here all 30s. Yes, sir?
At the same time they proposed this, they also said something about wanting a 1% sales tax on prepared food in the county. And that didn't go far, but is that still in the discussion?
It hasn't been with this board.
Well, they mentioned it at the same time.
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not included, not in this particular explanation. And Frank, I went through and did some homework on what that entails. There is a lot involved. And I also went through to see how many counties in the state of North Carolina you can do that. And there aren't many. I want you to know that. And I wish I knew exactly what the number was, but it's way over there.
For example, harpoon, tourists coming in here for additional 3% on their occupancy. Most dogs don't have a dog in that hunt, and that's, that's a true beauty for tourism. But if you're going to tax people in this county who are full-time residents 12 months out of the year. In order to harpoon those tourists 5 months out of the year, it charges another 1% of prepared food. That makes no sense whatsoever.
It's not in the conversation.
Well, I know it's not, but it was brought up. So let me go on record, as you always say. That is bad. You can't tax yourself into prosperity any more than you can spend yourself into prosperity.
How about taxing yourself into providing needed services?
3%.
On needed services, I'm not talking about travel and tourism.
Oh, that's what I was talking about. Travel and tourism. Well, since you've asked a question. If we can say, we're collecting every possible tax in this county, that we are. And we don't have enough money, then there's nowhere else to go but more taxes, raise taxes. But as long as there's uncollected taxes, no, don't raise taxes. Go after what is owed.
That's what we did in referring this to. We went out and had to do unpaid taxes. That's who we're going to collect. Am I, mind you, we won't collect all of them. If you owe $35 or $40, and it's something costing $150, you collect it, which you keep it.
Common sense.
Common sense, right. But we're going to collect any bigger money on the way we're going. That might be into the budget. We were still $200,000,000, because that money hadn't come from somewhere. And we can't keep a grudge about getting out of money. We had to go. we had to go up two, two cents on the bill. Thanks to Obama, he cost a hundred and one thousand dollars to put his money, that was the first thing.
What was that?
A day.
I mean, what, what, from what? Is that from Obama, or is that from this crowd down at the state now?
That's additional leisure, uh, that was additional medical insurance.
Medical.
Can I ask you to verify something for me? What do you mean state gambling? I don't understand that.
Well, the people down at state now, they're cutting, 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 and the little state, that rest county's going to get squeezed more and more.
Don't, don't even know it, it's been handed down, unfunded mandate.
And, uh...
We're going to have to pay back the surtax, as you heard, on the unemployment insurance that was renewed again and again.
Well, that's part, part of that, it's from the state down here.
That was from the state, and they can't pay us, so you know who it's going to get to?
Well, it's a little small county that's going to get squeezed.
All of us are going to get squeezed, everybody's going to have to pay that surtax, and then with the legislation, I'm not going to call it a bomb here, call it ACA, it's what it is, we are going to have to pay that increase on part-time employees, we haven't got a choice, the surtax plus the ACA expense was an automatic hundred and one thousand dollars. So that, that's where they have it.
That's one thing now, you better be prepared for more.
Absolutely, next year.
Coming from the state down here.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just waiting to bait and break, if anybody's got any recommendations as to what to do.
I listen every, every week of what, what they've done down there, you understand?
Right.
And some of it is bad, uh, for the small counties.
Well, you know, they're trying to turn over too, is the possibility of, you know how much a schoolless costs?
I don't know.
I do. It's eighty-seven thousand dollars.
And they're cutting that, I mean, he's going to come back to...
Well, one of the things I hope it is, and they're going to say, well, they're going to allow you to go up to what, two hundred thousand dollars, instead of a hundred thousand, so it's less, so it's less than the last one, but then through the budget for that. So, you know, I, you've got to look at it from every standpoint, and honestly, you know, we have done everything we can, and then, you know, to go and hear some comments tonight, somehow they were not communicating, and I, and I, and I hope, well, this budget is laid out, and you understand that, um, that we're going to do everything that we possibly can. I mean, there are things like privilege taxes that are going to be charged in this county, you know, like businesses, how many businesses here pay business tax? Joe, do you pay business tax? Do they have a license?
We, we have license, we do have license.
With the state?
I do have a license, agriculture.
With the state?
I have an agriculture, state agriculture license.
You have a county.
I do have a county.
County license? Who did you pay for that?
The health department.
Oh, that's, that's your health department. What I'm trying to say is, is that's a tax related.
Well, understand that, it's tax and spin, it's tax and spin, somewhere along the line, you're going to have to say, where is enough? Where does it stop? I mean, everybody would like to have new roads, and that's why the gas prices are supposed to be, part of that's for the roads.
I have nothing to talk to that.
Well...
This board doesn't have anything to talk to that. You know where our control is, is reaction, we have to react.
Yeah.
We have nothing to say about those taxes. Forty-eight cents to the gallon, we have nothing to say about it.
Hundred, hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's a lot of money.
What do you mean, Joe? What do you want?
Huh?
What do you want?
What I want?
Yeah.
Operate under budget, I mean, if it's a hundred and forty thousand, I can't, I just don't justify passing it on.
You need to go to the travel and tourism, I mean, and I'm going to be the interim chair.
I went to the last, I went to the last one, I called Mr. Davis, I told him I was opposed to the, the bill, and I thought it was tax and spin, big government, and I've got some more comments that I want to hold for.
Okay, all right, we will do that, we will, we will do that. Anyone else? Okay, we have just about six minutes, we'd like to have a recess for the board, to take a break, and then we'll start back into our record session at five o'clock, if it's agreeable. Okay, we'll stand for recess.